Well, it's nine o'clock. Why don't we go ahead and begin? We'll stand for prayer. Let's allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, once again humbling ourselves before you and just asking for your guidance and direction in our jobs here in the county. We pray for our community. We pray for our state, our nation, in fact even the world during this coronavirus pandemic, and ask Lord that you would help us, Father, bring this to an end so that we can get our community and our employees back to work and things beginning to run again. We pray for those that are sick, for those that are having to deal with this, with the tragedy of death even in some circumstances within our state. We just pray that you would protect this community. We pray for no additional cases going forward and that we can watch this quickly come to an end. We turn this agenda over to you and ask that you would enable us to take care of each item in the appropriate way. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our first meeting, regular meeting of the month of April. It's the thirteenth of April, 2020. And for the history books, while you're watching us on this video, we are sitting apart, trying to do the best we can to maintain proper distance between us during the coronavirus matter that we are dealing with here on a daily basis. And we're going to begin with item number one, but before we do that, I have got a ten o'clock daily conference call, and I'm going to go to that. So I'm going to take care of, if you will circle on your agenda, the items that I'm going to be here for, just so you'll know what to come back to. We may get through all of this, I don't know. But if you'll circle or check items one, two, three, five, six, seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and if I'm absent for any of those that I haven't mentioned there, you all can handle it by yourselves, and Al will preside as our reigning member with the most seniority. So let's begin, and again, I'll try to get through all of these. Item number one is time for public comment, request for information on non-agenda items. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, anybody here today wants to address the court on anything that's not on the agenda? All righty, let's look at item number two, considering possibly approve minutes from our March 23rd meeting. That was our second regular meeting of the month of March.
Make motion, we approve it.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And likewise, item number three was a short meeting from April 2nd, when we just extended our orders and talked about how we were dealing with this regarding a declaration for the community and how our individual offices were dealing with the COVID-19 virus.
Make motion, we approve it.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, considering possibly approve a subdivision for the Stafford addition. I'm not quite sure exactly where this stands, to tell you the truth. I've seen the letter from Clint Bane. It looks like Al may have some documents up there. So where do we stand on this, either Al or Joyce?
I have, I have, I have all of it here. I have, I only have one, one question. The way the subdivisions were designed was the fact that we would have streets and roads, and this subdivision has no, no, that, out, doesn't have the, any, any say-so about fixing the roads, and the roads are, well, just old, might have been a road one time. And I'm not sure, when we put in the subdivision rules, I thought all of that was covered. We even got the specification that the roads had to be and everything. And other than that, all of this paperwork is in order, and I, I don't know why we, we have dropped that, or maybe I misunderstood it when we did it. But we had a lady at 1425 one time, they had a subdivision, and they wanted to buy a piece of property down at the end of it, and they bought it, and then they come to court. They complained to me that the seller told them that they would, the county would build them a road down to where they wanted to build a house. And, and of course, we couldn't, and I didn't, and that was six, seven years ago. But what happens if someone buys one of these lots, and then they go and the road washes out, who's, what, what are they going to do? Do they have any protection, or is there any means for them to know that they, they're going to have to fix the road, or repair the road, or keep the road maintained? The county's not going to do it. It's a private road. And George Sanford said it was a community road, but it's still maintained by the subdivision or the people that live on the road. So I'm, I'm a little confused about that. I really thought that we had to build the roads up. I don't know what everybody else understood, but if you read the subdivision rules, it gives us specifications and all of that kind of stuff, but it doesn't, I guess it doesn't say that you have to have a road to have a subdivision. So, but I, I'd make a motion and recommend that we get the roads put in, up to standard, and I think it'd bring a lot more money, or some way to protect the buyers to know what's going on. Because the buyers and that piece of property happened to me, in my precinct before, they didn't know that the seller told them they were going to, county would build them a road.
Well, I'm, I'm going to tread lightly on this. This is my business partner here. I'm not going to vote on this. I don't know what kind of guidance you need from me. I just assume stay quiet on this matter. If you want Mr. Lawrence to address the court, if you, if you have other questions of him, you know, I don't want to direct this conversation.
Well, yeah, does, I mean, is there any, any plans for the road other than what's there now? It's pretty rough. If it get good, good rain, this is to Mr. Lawrence, the question is.
Why don't you come up here?
I've been on it after a rain, and it's, it's not passable.
I've submitted all the documents, and it is a public road. There is a house at the end of that road. And as I've built one house over there, so far, I've maintained the road up to that point. My, my contention is I will upgrade the road on a as-needed basis, lot for lot. So I'm not asking the county to put any effort into maintaining the road. I feel like I can do that myself. Sergeant Bane's been down there. He knows it needs to be upgraded. It will be upgraded. I've submitted documents to all the commissioners. George Sanford has worked on my behalf to present the proposal, subdivision proposal, and I feel like, you know, when and if I get one lot sold, I will maintain the road and, and keep it up to standard.
There's no protection for the buyer? Are the buyer, does they, is there any?
I don't think you'll have a buyer unless I build a decent road. So it's, it will be up to me to do that. And, you know, I agree with you. I mean, I wouldn't want to buy a piece of property that didn't have good access. It has decent access. Now, I can show you other roads in the county that are worse than this road. So leave it up to me to repair the road, upgrade the road on an as-needed basis. And that's, that's the document I've shown, shown you all. Mr. Sanford, shown, shown you all. I'd like to, to be able to do that myself.
Well, I really, I really thought that our subdivision requirements required us, subdivision to be a-
It's not a new road on this one, I don't believe, because it is an existing public road. You can go back to the sixties or seventies and find this road on county road maps. I took you out there and showed you that. I've showed all the commissioners, the sheriff, Sergeant Bane has seen everything. It is an existing road. It will be upgraded, and I'll be the one to do that.
Well, for it, but you, you, have you seen the subdivision rules about the specifications for road for the county to take it over?
For new roads, yes, sir.
Yeah.
This is not a new road.
Well, that's the only problem I have with the subdivision. I guess, I'm, I'm not sure that I, that I recommend it, but I think we should vote on it and get, get it passed us. I make a motion, we, we vote yea or nay on this, approving this subdivision.
Are you making a motion? What is your motion?
That we vote, have a commissioner's vote on this subdivision to approve it.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, I'll give you a motion, Commissioner Riddle, second, Commissioner Applewhite. Does anybody have a question here? You've got Mr. Lawrence here. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you may do that. I'll leave that to the side. Okay, item number six, considering possible. Considering possibly approve the purchase of three cases, 288 total shields of plastic face shields for the volunteer fire departments purchased from the Sweet Shop USA. USA had a total cost of $544.32. I think it was the last meeting, I can't remember, that I told you that Sweet Shop had converted part of their production line to making these shields, and they got on that pretty quickly. Chief, gosh, can you remember which chief did this? Jerry?
Clark.
Clark, sorry, getting old. Chief Clark is the one that got this going, and he was able to make a smaller than normal mandatory count for the county. He got some for our volunteer fire departments, and I think the hos, the hospital is going to be a large buyer of those. But anyway, he secured these for the volunteer fire departments, and in, in, I think the first run of these, instead of a 10 case or nine case minimum, he got three cases. So that was something nice. Obviously, we'll have extras of these, more than likely, that perhaps we could sell back if we wanted to, to the hospital. I don't know that we would want to do that. I think these will come in handy for years. But I did want you all to approve that rather than just putting it on the table for your signature.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, kind of along that same line, item number seven, considering possibly approve the purchase of one 55-gallon drum. That 55-gallon drum was $1,250 by itself, and three gallons, excuse me, three five-gallon containers. This is all the same hand sanitizer. This was a bulk purchase that was arranged through the Regional Advisory Council, or the RAC, we call it here, the Department of State Health Services. This is an arm of them that helps in emergency services. And the city also made the same identical purchase. They also got a 55-gallon drum and three five-gallon jugs. I put out every bit of this three five-gallon jug since last Friday, dispensing it on the courthouse steps. We didn't really know how to dispense this. We still got the 55-gallon drum coming, but, you know, I was personally here, you know, over the weekend several times and helped quite a few people get this, get this hand sanitizer. It's a real watery product. It works best in a spray bottle. I believe James distributed to all of our departments a spray bottle of this. So, you know, one squirt in your hand. It's not like the gel, but it's, it's very effective. In fact, it's probably a higher concentrate of alcohol than what you buy in the store. So how will we dispense the other 55 gallons? I'm not exactly sure. I've got some ideas. But we took the opportunity to, when that was presented to us, to go ahead and get that. At the time, we couldn't get any hand sanitizer anywhere in town, and it's still pretty difficult to get. So, did we buy too much? I guess time will tell, but we sure did go through 15 gallons quickly in three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I stepped out there and got that. $1,800 pays for the 55, three five gallons, and a pump, a pump that can be used in either one of these five gallons or the 55 gallon.
Make a motion, we approve it?
Motion to approve this purchase is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's jump down to item number 11, considering possibly approve a budget amendment to create two new budget categories. One is going to be a revenue account. One is going to be an expense account related to the VINE grant. If you'll remember, each year we approve a VINE grant. That V-I-N-E stands for, I can't remember right now, but basically it's an early warning for victims of violent crimes or crimes where somebody is about to be getting out of jail, and the appropriate third-party vendor gives a heads-up contact to these victims, letting them know that the person that was guilty of that crime is about to be getting out of jail. And I'm going to let Barbara elaborate a bit more on this, but Carl had previously allowed the monies that came in and out just to wash through a single account. And in fact, I think you told me that the monies typically went straight to the third-party vendor, and we didn't even touch it. But now, we're actually going to get the money, and we're actually going to disperse the money. And I'm in total agreement with Barbara that the way to handle that is not in and out through one account, just like you wouldn't do that with any of our other accounts. It makes sense to set up two accounts for this, so that we can see the money coming in, see the money going out. There's no financial impact to the county. All we're doing is a new accounting procedure here. Barbara, is there anything else I haven't said there that they need to know? Okay, so this is, in my opinion, a simple decision, and it enables Barbara to account for expenses and revenues in the more appropriate way.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 12 is to consider and possibly approve a payroll policy for the COVID-19 situation related, for, for COVID-19-related absences by our employees in accordance with this brand-new Family First Coronavirus Act. And I sent, I think you've all got a copy of that in front of you there. And this is, this is federal law, is that correct, Barbara? May I bring you a, this, and let you explain a little bit more after I am finished here? But, well, first of all, I just want to bring, bring to your attention here what this is saying. Paid leave entitlements, you have some differences in here. There can't, an employee can be eligible for up to two weeks, or a part-time employee's two-week equivalent of paid sick leave based on the higher of their regular rate of pay or the applicable state or federal minimum wage. Of course, we exceed all of that, so we're talking about an employee could get up to two weeks of pay. Some, under certain circumstances here below, it may be cut down to two-thirds. And then in other situations, it could actually be up to 12 weeks of paid sick leave and expanded family and medical leave that is paid at two-thirds. And you've got different categories here, qualifying reasons in that box there, about two-thirds down. Number one, if there's, is subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine, or isolation order. We haven't had one of those yet. Number two, they have been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine. In other words, that would be an involuntary situation where the employee is said, is told, you must self-quarantine. Item three is if they are actually experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and they're seeking a medical diagnosis. They haven't necessarily been tested positive, but they're experiencing the symptoms, and they and everybody in the county wants them anywhere but at work. Number four is if they're caring for an individual that's subject to one of these orders described in number one, or self-quarantining in number two. So that's if they're caring for that individual. Item five is if they're caring for his or her child whose school or place of care is closed, or the childcare provider is unavailable, all related to COVID-19. And then item number six, if they're experiencing any other substantially similar condition. Well, you can see up there that for items one, two, and three, they qualify for up to two weeks at 100% pay. If it's for number four or number six, here where they're caring for somebody else, they only get two-thirds of their pay during those two weeks. And then if it's item, in item number five, they could be eligible for up to 12 weeks of paid sick leave at that two-thirds rate. So Barbara, is it our recommendation to the court that we follow these guidelines as they're stated here?
Yes, sir. These are the federal guidelines. You're required to follow them.
It's not like it's optional here. This is-
It's not optional.
And to your knowledge, have we had, without going into names or details, have we had any of these circumstances come up yet where we are applying this?
We have not.
Okay. And hopefully, we will escape this without having, well, first of all, without having someone to have to be off of work, without them having to receive two-thirds pay. But nonetheless, if we do have a situation come up, these are, this is what the federal guys are telling us that we need to do, and this is what we need to adopt. And I just want everybody to be aware of it. All department heads were given a copy of this.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion to approve this employee rights under the FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say, well, is there any question, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 13, discuss county operations in light of COVID-19 with possible action to follow. I put that on the last couple of agendas. I, I don't really have anything to relay to you at this point. We are still under the declaration that went into effect on April 2nd, a week and a half ago, on that Friday, that it goes through the end of this month. At this time, I don't know what our plans are going to be after that. I am certainly hoping that there can be some significant relaxing of those declaration rules by that time. But I'm, change this every day, and we make these decisions every morning when we talk, so I don't know what to tell you. The governor, I think today, if not today, later this week, is going to lay out his plan for how he sees us coming out of this gradually. Hopefully, he's not, we know he's not just going to flip the switch and say, okay, everything's back to normal. But he will lay out a plan, and that may be based on a future date that it will begin. I don't really know. I'm looking forward to what he has to say. So I don't have anything else to say. Is there any commissioners or any other elected officials that are here that would like to discuss anything, or have a question, or a comment?
I'd like to know, like I said, if, you know, somebody's been around somebody with that COVID, they would need be, how would they go about getting a letter to say they was around somebody if they can be quarantined for 14 days?
Okay, I'm not sure. Are you talking about specifically one of our employees, or not necessarily?
No, it don't, it don't matter. Just anybody that's around somebody that's been, has contacted the COVID virus, and they've got around them, and how would, so it'd be an employee, don't matter if it be an employee, how would we, would, how would we do with them? Would we send them home, or what?
Well, we did have a situation similar, I think, to what you're describing here. And she simply told her boss about the situation, and the boss talked to me, and we both decided, I think there's, anybody that works in this county, elected official or otherwise, would send that employee home, who had been in, who had a very good opportunity to have contracted the virus. So they were sent home. So that was not a voluntary thing, hey, please send me home. That was an elected official saying, I, I want you gone from here.
Like I said, I was, encountered Thursday that we had a, it was somebody, family member had maybe did with, on the testing and everything. That's why I called and asked about the testing Friday, but Thursday rather. But like I said, I would just, you know, I found out that, you know, you've got to go by regulations. The CDC tells you how to do that. And so...
Are you talking about as far as whether, whether they can get tested?
Right.
Yeah. Well, since we have had multiple cases confirmed here, our availability of testing has gradually increased.
Yes, I've heard it's increased.
And I don't know if we're yet to the point where somebody who just may have come in contact with it could get tested. I don't think that that's available yet. As these private testing labs ramp up, somebody may be very able to go and get tested. Walgreens is supposed to be available for test, not our Walgreens.
Right.
But within seven states and several of the larger communities. How quickly that will spread to our community, I don't know. I'm hoping we're past that by the time we have widespread testing available. But-
Because my main feeling is that, you know, you, you see people out, I don't think everybody's been out at Lowe's or Home Depot this past two weekends. And I had to go with some plumbing supplies because it was something to fix. And those people out there didn't have a mask on. They had their whole families. And I said, my goodness, I'd be, I told them, I just went there by myself. I said, I'm not taking a chance like that. And it was full. I said, I'm getting out of here. But that, you know, I just wish that people would take this more seriously.
I, I haven't been to Lowe's. I have been routinely going by Walmart and the grocery stores. I did go by Home Depot on one occasion. I personally have seen a dramatic reduction. We have asked specifically with direct communication with Walmart manager and Super One and Brookshures to please limit your shopping parties to one. Of course, that is up to them. If they find, we may have a single mother with kids that doesn't have an option, that's up to them. But I just wanted them to know we would back them up if they wanted to attempt to enforce that. So they felt like they have seen an improvement there. They're doing an excellent job based upon the, you know, the challenge that they have. But why aren't people listening to that? I can't tell you. It's not that the information is not out there. It's out there in Spanish. It's out there in English. Yeah, we would certainly hope that people would abide, but we have not made any other, the decision to elevate the level of our requirements. You know, we're not requiring masks to be worn. We're not requiring you go into a store only as an individual. You know, we've stated, you know, nonessential travel is illegal right now.
Right.
So technically, if somebody's going out and, and shopping for plumbing supplies like you, I'm sure that that was an essential item that you needed there, that you were considering. But how do we monitor that?
Yeah.
Don't know.
But I, I just, you know, I don't know if this is true. I've heard, you know, they're going to start with the, some parks in the city. I don't know if they're going to shut like Dalewood and all there. They still got it, them open?
The parks are still open, yes. We have not, we teetered with that last week, but we have not closed the parks. If we close the park, it would probably be closing the jungle gyms and swing sets and stuff like that. Now, now that I live by the park, I'm there a lot, and I, and I see people abiding by the rules down there, a lot more so than they were two weeks ago. But no, we don't have a perfect situation here, and we just hope that people are using their head.
Is it mandatory that these businesses that are open abide by the six-foot rule and the number of people that are allowed in the store at one time?
You know, you know what that order said. And that order said, for one, they have to have a plan- And that order said, for one, they have to have a plan taped to their front door that explains how they're going to do that. And so the answer is yes. And if they can't meet that, they're not supposed to be open. Now, as you can imagine, law enforcement is real hesitant to start getting into writing tickets, but we did talk about that over the weekend, and we have encouraged them to begin with verbal warnings, written warnings. I don't know that we're ready to start giving out tickets yet. If it was up to me and it was easy to do, I'd say, "Yeah, give a few tickets and we'll send a message real quickly." But as you can understand, Sheriff and Chief Holcomb are, that makes their job really difficult if they're asked to do that. But we have asked them to, you know, as they're driving by, you know, honk the horn and tell those people, you know, bust it up if they need to. But, but yes, to your question, a business is not supposed to be operating if they can't keep control over that six-foot distance.
That was my concern with, like Lowe's, was that they were just, you know, people were just going in now there like normal.
You couldn't even get a parking spot the Friday and Saturday?
You know, if there was 200 people out there, they're all in the store at one time. But I don't know that for a fact. So I haven't been out there and not planned on going, but...
Well, Sheriff will deputize any one of you if you want to. You know, it's tough on the employer, it's tough on law enforcement, don't know what the answer is. All we can do is promote, promote, promote.
I understand. I've received a couple of phone calls about, you know, things like that, that, you know, people were upset because they, they, you know, maybe had a business and they were being forced to do things like that. But they, then on the other hand, they were grateful that we were able to, you know, kinda curb it in most ways, so...
Well, and that's one of the significant differences that we chose to do rather than closing all non-essential businesses. We said instead, "If you're a non-essential business and you choose to stay open, we will give you the permission to do that if and only if you have a written plan and you abide by it." Okay, anything else? Any ladies? Okay. All right, I'm gonna go back now, and I'm gonna jump back to item number eight, discuss amending the budget to accommodate a repair and maintain, the repair and maintenance needs for the county-owned equipment that's shared by all the precincts. We're running into a situation here where now that it's, now that we've bought all this equipment, this shared equipment for the county, and in the future, as repair and maintenance needs arise, we don't have an adequately funded account that is going to take care of all these repair and maintenance needs. And so the discussion here is, what is a good way to do that? Do we want to start dividing up those expenses divided by four precincts? Do we want to ask the precincts to fund some additional money from your budget into this shared equipment repair and maintenance account? Am I wording that right? Okay. And y'all can understand this. We, and we attempted to fund this account, we just didn't fund it quite enough because we really don't know what the repair and maintenance needs will be on all this shared equipment yet. So what are your thoughts there?
Well, I, I myself think we just, at this point, just need to go back to the, to dividing it up the four ways like we did in the past. I mean, everybody's using the equipment, and I think it just needs to be divided up, and then maybe look at setting something aside in this next budget year to, for that account. But as of right now, that account is down to nothing, and we need to, I mean, it's got to come from somewhere, and rather than us just put it all, you know, put some out of our budget in there, I think we just need to divide it up as we, as it's needed between the four of us.
Operationally, that may be difficult to separate a bill every time it comes up. Is, what would be?
That's my concern.
You know?
It's gonna be hard to determine if you're using it and when you got it and it's already worn out, you need it to be replaced. So should the previous person have paid for it?
No, that's not what he's saying. He's saying that, let's say we get a $1,000 repair bill or a maintenance bill on one of these pieces of equipment, well, then you divide it up $250 for each one every time a bill comes in, as opposed to shoving, you know, X thousand dollars from each precinct into that account so that it continues to be paid out of that repair, common repair and maintenance account without having to divide each bill by four that comes in.
Right. Well, my concern is if, if we split it like what you're talking about, a bill comes in for $1,000 and everybody pays that, but say Jimmy has not used that piece of equipment the whole year, his roads are not gotten the benefit of that equipment at all. That's my concern, you split it four ways. But my other concern is if we split it four ways and take out their individual budgets, or we're just pushing this problem along down the road till summertime comes and then we use up your budgets in addition to this line item we're discussing here that's already used up. That's my whole concern. I would prefer that we took care of it now and we didn't have to worry about it.
Well, what is your suggestion on how to take care of it?
My suggestion is that if the budget that we have is $15,000, we thought that was gonna be sufficient, we put that in there because we had all the equipment. Last year, we spent $39,000 and some change. So my recommendation would be that we use that money out of contingency and fund that line item up to whatever number y'all think is sufficient, $35,000 or $4,000 or whatever thing we need to do. And then it will come out of your budget and it won't put everybody out. It won't tie your hands until it's to be July, August, or hopefully the roads, the weather's good, and you get the plan that's done. My concern that if we wait, if we split it out four ways now and wait, and in August, we'll be back having the same conversation.
We've been splitting it equally, like Jimmy says, for 20 years, for eight years. It's so amazing to me that the voters voted for the unit system, and then they voted to get rid of the unit system. And what did we do as commissioners? We've got a whole nother entity, and you're trying to create another entity as a maintenance department. And we have two guys running it, they're getting paid more than the thing, they're not elected, they're just hired. And we take, we just take money. What was wrong with us splitting it up? And I can assure you, before this deal, we created this new entity, that we, they asked each commissioner, we, that old Boemag, $20,000. They come around to every commissioner, "We're gonna, it's gonna take about $20,000. What do you guys think about it?" You know what I mean? And we did it, and they split it four ways on the shared equipment. And I don't see anything wrong with that. We all use it equally. We might use it this time, it break down on me. I think when it broke down in the Boemag, it was on two. But it didn't make any difference, it had to be fixed, and we need to fix it. I don't understand why we're creating and creating another big job. It's the same reason. We had 117 employees in 2013, now we got 137 county employees. We've created these jobs, we've created positions, and then we tell these people we're doing a good job managing their tax dollars. Something is wrong with our system when we always want to add another position. We've got an extra position, they have a lot of time on their hands in the shop, and everybody knows what they do, and not very much. And I can tell you, the taxpayers should be aware of what we've done. We've increased that budget in that maintenance shop by $100,000 in the last three or four years. And by what you're doing, it'll create some more. They're gonna, they're gonna create positions that they don't have to work, I can tell you that. They're not mechanics, they're clerks. And they're gonna create another job, another way to separate the money, and if the taxpayers are gonna stand for it, I guess that's their position. But the commissioners shouldn't stand for it, they're obligated, and they shouldn't stand for it. They should go back like it was before the unit system that the commissioners wanted to get rid of, but yet we want to have a whole nother department, just like they did under the unit system. So I don't understand.
I gotta interrupt here. Do you understand what we're, what is your suggestion here? Based on what you're saying, I'm not even sure you understand the question.
Sure I do.
Okay, what's your suggestion?
You want to set up another fund so that it breaks down?
What is your solution?
My suggestion is leave it, go back, everything is charged back to the unit system, the commissioner's system. Everybody, we have a budget. Every year, if there's some money, some money that needs to be spent on a shared piece of equipment, we split it four ways. We're discussed.
Out of your existing budget monies?
No, we, what do we, yeah. I think, how much money you got in the maintenance department now? Why do we keep adding to that?
No, you're going beyond, let's limit this conversation to what she's saying.
Okay.
The problem is, she's run out of money in the shared repair and maintenance account. Do you want to refill it with contingency money, or do you want her to send you a bill for $5,000 per precinct to put into that shared equipment account?
Are you aware of how we did it before? Are you aware before?
Under the unit system?
No, before the unit system was ever thought of.
I don't think we had that much shared equipment back then. We've got a whole lot of it now.
We got the same amount of shared equipment we had then. The only thing...
Okay, so the answer is no, I'm not aware. That's why I'm questioning this.
No, nothing's changed. We, the only person was, I can tell you that Jimmy, Precinct Ford, didn't participate in the roller thing, and the tree truck. That was it. Everybody else split it three ways. If we, they didn't use them, they didn't use that roller, they didn't use the tree truck. Other than that, everything was split four ways on the Boemag, all the other equipment.
So every time a bill came in, she discharged it to four different?
That's right.
Okay.
For one of those shared equipment, and that's it. We don't need another, we don't need another clerical work. And the problem is, now this is opinion, we're buying, they say we can buy it in bulk. That's not right. They could say, "We want to buy a bunch of tires." I say it's not right, it might be with sheriffs, I don't know. So we'll have them in stock, and we can save money. That's not, that's not necessarily true. I can tell you from experience, blades on the front of, the blades on the motor grader, they wear out, the little thing, on the back hole, they wear out. But we could buy 10 of them and pay the freight and get them here, and in my yard, I got 10 of them, and I think they had them in two, and they had them in three. They had, but what we're trying to say is, that's, that's a good salesman's job, them saying they can buy it in bulk and save money. That's why they want their own budget, they're trying to create more clerical work.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you all discuss this one because you don't need me to settle this one. So I'm gonna set this aside, and we'll come back to it in a minute. Unless somebody's got a good concrete motion that they would like to make, I'm not even sure I understand what your motion is, but if you'd like to make a motion here...
I'd like to make a motion that we stop that, having that shop maintenance and that all of that money spread out to the budget by each precinct equally. And at that point, we can pay the bill.
Talking about shared equipment maintenance, is what you're saying?
Shared equipment maintenance, yeah. Well, I'd like to see all the maintenance shit.
So you want her to send a, you want her to bill each department 25% every time there's a bill related to shared equipment?
Absolutely.
Okay. There's your motion. Everybody understand that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Everybody understand? So as I'm understanding this, correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, as a, as a shared piece of equipment has monies that need to be spent on it, and knowing that your existing $15,000 account is depleted, you're now just simply gonna charge that repair bill 25% to each?
To each.
Yeah? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number nine, consider and possibly approve a budget amendment allowing the jail to replace an air conditioner unit using commissary funds. I'm gonna let you talk about this one because I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I know we needed an air conditioning unit, Sheriff says he's got commissary funds that whether he has them or not right now, he's going to have enough. But let you explain what we, why this is on the agenda and what we need to decide.
Okay. The sheriff contacted me, he needed to make some upgrades to the jail air conditioning. His concern is that in light of the coronavirus, we need to get ahead of the curve and be prepared and make sure we have good air quality there. So he's gotten quotes from two different vendors. One of those was from, not where the original one was from, but he checked with Wood Air Conditioning because they're local, and they were less, John Wayne and Wood. John Wayne was a little higher than what Wood would do for us. So the sheriff doesn't have that money in his budget in a single line item, but he does have the cash available within that commissary fund. And I've looked up the requirements for that, he is allowed to make those decisions. I'm only asking you for a budget amendment because we do run those things through the official budget. So that's why we're here today to ask for that budget amendment. It's $26,000.
But he will actually collect more commissary money that will enable him to have that money?
He's got the cash on hand, it's just simply an accounting policy where we need to put money into that line item, the net. We're gonna use fund balance as a revenue source, money that, his savings account within that commissary fund, and then we're gonna increase the line item budget for repairs and maintenance for AC for the same amount.
So is this affecting our existing management year's payment?
No. Yeah. It's cash that he already has on hand. Yeah.
So this is a budget amendment for him to operate?
Yes.
So how many?
Not him.
So that's the store money from the jail, and Tim, you know, that's money they make with selling items to the prisoners, and he uses it for all kind of neat stuff over at the jail. They only use it for certain things, health and welfare of the prisoners and such, and so I think it's a good thing, it saved us a bunch of money through the years. And I make a motion that we transfer that out of commissary to pay for the air conditioner.
Motion?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch, second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number 10, consider and possibly approve a modification to a previously approved purchase of a truck for Precinct One due to production delays with an additional cost of $3,300. So as I understand it, the original truck that we tried to buy, they, there's been production delays, and you found another one that we can get quickly, but it's gonna cost more money?
True. We, we took bids in the beginning, and this was the lowest bid. And then they said it would be March or April before it got through. Then they, Ford told us it would be a year because they had stopped making that particular truck for six months. So this was the cheapest truck of all, the Chevrolet, and the guy, bid, they're out of Caldwell, Texas, wherever that is, but they'll deliver it through Sandlin Chevrolet. So they give us the same specs on it, and it was the cheapest truck, and we ordered it, be here March and April. And they've said now that they don't know with this making, they stopped production on it, making general ventilators or something, or something General Motors did. But they had one that someone else had ordered and stopped, identical. The bids are identical except it has four-wheel drive. And they want $3,200 or $3,300 more money to get the four-wheel drive, but it can be delivered in two weeks.
Wasn't it longer too?
Twelve, 24 inches, 20 inches, yeah.
So it's got a big, longer bed, or doesn't have, or what?
No, longer wheelbase.
It's, it's a longer wheelbase.
It's got the same wheelbase that Johnny, that Jimmy's been using for years.
My old truck has got the same wheel.
Where, where does that length come into play, in the bed?
No, from the steering axle to the drive axle. That's how trucks are measured in wheelbase. And that is 21 inches longer.
Well, the bed, the body doesn't look the same. Somewhere there's got, where does the length go into the body of the truck? Is it in the bed? Am I making sense?
No, it's not the bed, it's the drive.
Well, it, it, the, the bed will be a little longer than, than the other truck. There, the... And Al may know better than I do, but the...
The bed won't fit on.
The, the bed that...
The bed will not fit on the, the longer truck or the shorter.
The bed that he's got on his truck now won't fit this, this new truck. It'll have to be a longer bed.
Like a box truck.
Okay, then what we're buying doesn't even have a bed on it?
No. It's just cab jassy, just cab jassies.
I'm picturing a pickup truck and I'm going two feet longer, how do you do that?
No.
This is just a bear on the back end and it's two feet longer. Okay, so you can get this quicker, four-wheel drive, more money. You can get it within a couple of weeks.
And we, and the truck that we've had has been in, we've spent so much money on it in the last seven years and it still cranks up and it scares you to death that it's gonna run that day. It makes a terrible noise. And I'm worried that we're gonna get busy and we're not gonna have a tow truck.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Riddle to allow him to get this truck to bypass production delays. Cost us extra $3,300. Ma'am?
It's $3,400.
$3,400.
Second.
Motion, second, make note that it's $3,400 is the request, not $3,300. All in favor, say aye? Okay, let's back up to... I'm gonna let you all do road work, road commissioner reports here without me. Let's talk about budget amendments. Barbara, you got budget amendments?
Yeah, I'm gonna review on the budget. One of the things that I'm seeing that Carl does is he puts money in, for example, the first one I had, four appointed attorneys. And then at the end of the year, he takes that money within that and puts it to all the different line items such as commitment fees, commitment for appointed attorneys and other expenses. Instead of waiting until the end of the year, I've done this at mid-year, the net impact on this for the, for the budget for the county is none, zero. But I did that for the four appointed attorneys. The sheriff has some other expenses that's related to employee overtime, meals for transport and medical transport. We have utilities for Precinct Two for the water. Water at Precinct Two comes out of miscellaneous expense and then there's no impact to the budget. And then we have the justice court technology. If you will recall, JP Two, his son, had asked for us to approve some funds out of our technology to pay for our retirement employee. Y'all approved that. The item that was not included in that was sick leave, we made at least 25% of sick leave. So, that comes out of that technology fund. I contacted her, she would still be able to follow up her regular budget and with the technology fund. Everyone's been contacted about this. This is just something that I prefer to do every six months instead of just at the end of the year. The end, the net impact is zero.
And that's your only adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, just a mid-year cleanup rather than waiting to the end of the year to do that cleanup?
Okay.
Any questions on that? So, that's the one and only budget amendment that you've got? You just need an approval on that?
Make a motion, approve it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. So, that takes care of item number 16. Oh, yeah, let's vote, all in favor, say aye? Okay, let's go ahead and go back to a report from commissioners on road work within your precinct. Commissioner Riddle?
Mine, we're still rehabbing the ranch, Honeycutt Ranch Road and then it's been the normal trees and blowing over and patching, basically, the last two weeks, a lot of it.
We're putting some millings down next, random asphalt on 3249 and we put it on 3265 and we're just trying to cover the spots up that we tilled up and we're just trying to catch up. And so, we got a tree down, a tree down yesterday, but lucky we had to go out. But I went out and checked it out. We've had a lot of, we've had a lot of rain and it's, and it, we just trying to catch up on the patching. We patched a little bit, but, you know, with this rain and stuff, we hadn't been able to patch like we need to. But starting, till we get that 3249 fixed today, we're gonna start getting coal mixed in and we're gonna get these roads start patching all over the county. You know, we just got a bunch out there.
Everybody gotten all your rap from Tech Town yet or is that still ongoing?
We've still got a lot to move.
Still got a lot to move, okay.
I've got all of mine moved. We finished it up last Friday, it was a week ago. And we've been, I mean, was you through, Dan?
Yeah.
We've been, been, last week we spent the sunshiny days patching, trying to get, get some holes filled up and whatnot and cleaning out some ditches. We've got several more of them that we've, have got to get cleaned out and then we're gonna try to get started. If, if it holds out like they're saying, the weather men are saying now, well, this week's supposed to be pretty all week and hopefully we're gonna get started putting culverts and stuff in on the road we're gonna try to do this summer. Gonna try to chip seal this summer. So, hopefully we can get, get started on that, get something done with it.
So, y'all got all your rap?
Yes, I have.
Y'all done? We're still a pretty good pile on 271.
I still got some there.
And then there are another pile on that, Dakin Prairie Road, still?
Where?
Uh, what's that? Farm Market Road near Whitehall Creek?
We've, we've got...
Most of that?
We've almost got it. I mean, I think it might be a...
Well, I'll try to get, as I can, get on, keep moving it as I can. We've been moving some rap, we did it a couple of days.
Yep, I mean, I'll come get some.
Oh, nasty day. We're gonna have plenty of rap, y'all. Did some base figures on 2910 and some ditch cleaning out. I still got one more to do. On 2912, we put in a culvert cross drain and cleaning the ditches and we're doing some base figures on that road. Some general patching all over the county in our precinct. On 2300, we put in a driveway culvert and we've been cleaning the ditches at the intersection of 2315 and 2300. And we did some side cutting. I've had to go out and pick up some miscellaneous garbage and appliances, been throwed out, some tires last week. And then we had some trees down in the storms we've been cleaning. Had two down yesterday, get them picked up today, hopefully. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Al here. You've got left item number 14, 15, 17 and 18. And here's your... Auditorium report, Cheryl will have it. Thank you all.
Next items, approve oral and written reports from county officials. And I suppose that is a... Next, the next one though is approve treasurer's report. And that's, Cheryl usually does that.
Did that on that board, didn't we?
And approve the budget amendments we've already done, right?
On the, on the... On the oral and written reports, do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's it right here, right?
Yes, that's the one from both.
Well, Barbara gave us earlier.
I make motion, we approve the oral and written reports.
Second.
All in favor, say aye? You do have any more budget amendments, budget amendments? We've, we've already approved them. And sign orders and approve payments.
We gotta...
On number 15, consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Got to do the treasurer's report also.
I'm sorry, do that again, oh.
On number 18, I'm having a motion, second.
Oh, on the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? To approve the treasurer's report?
Make a motion.
Second.
Treasurer's report approved. How you doing, Cheryl? Sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion, we pay our bills. Second.
All in favor, say aye? Closing comments by the county judges and commissioners. You got any closing comment, John? No, sir.
No, sir.
Well, I make a mo, I accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.